Good evening and welcome to the Special Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is May 7, 2019. The time is 7:02 PM. Can we get roll call please?
Chair Mason.
Here.
Vice Chair Legasse.
Here.
Commissioner Lethine.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioners Hamilton and Biassadi and Johnson are absent and they are all excused from the absence.
Okay, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Belle, would you like to lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight there are no minutes to approve, so we will move on to item two on the agenda, public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing as how there's not, we're going to move on to item three, announcement of conflicts of interest. Do any commissioners have a conflict of interest tonight?
No.
No.
Great, thank you. Seeing as how there's none, we'll move on to item four, public hearing, section A, 300 Piedmont Avenue.
Good evening Chair Mason, members of the Planning Commission, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The project before you is 300 Piedmont Avenue, aka the former Crestmore High School site. The action before you today is to adopt a resolution confirming review of conformance with the San Bruno general plan on the disposition of the property located at 300 Piedmont Avenue, aka the former Crestmore High School site by the San Mateo Union High School District for the purposes of future development pursuant to government code section 65402. And before I go any further, I just wanted to let you know that there's an errata sheet that I gave the commissioners moments ago before the hearing started, and that changed the section that we're referring to. The original resolution referred to educational code number. This is actually a government code section, and so that was the only change, and that's before you, as you can see the change. And for anyone in the public, we have a few more copies back on the back table, but that was the only change. So as I said, this is a request for determination of general plan conformity for the sale or lease of the property at 300 Piedmont Avenue. This is not an action related to the actual sale of the property or development of the property. So the subject property, 300 Piedmont Avenue, is bounded by Madison Avenue to the west and south, Portland Drive to the east, and Rosewood Drive to the north. The site is 40-plus acres in size. The property was previously the site of the Crestmore High School, which opened in 1962 and closed in 1980. The site is currently the home of Peninsula High School, a public alternative high school with an estimated enrollment of 180 students, which is a fraction of the student enrollment of the former Crestmore High School, which was about 1,500. The site includes baseball, football, soccer, and track fields on the site, and those remain open for public use and are maintained by the City of San Bruno. The site is owned, as I said before, by the San Mateo Union High School District and is designated as low-density residential in the city's general plan. This land use designation primarily allows for single-family residential uses as well as single-family attached housing where clustering results in additional space, provided the each dwelling has ground floor living area and private open space. The permitted density range in the R1 district is 2.128 units per acre. Other permitted uses within the R1 district include accessory buildings and uses, small family daycare homes, special residential care facilities, including transitional and supportive housing. Conditionally permitted uses within the R1 district include schools, churches, parks, playgrounds, large family daycare homes, mobile home parks, and crop entry farming. The scope of the Planning Commission's review today is consistency between the sale or lease of these properties and the adopted goals and policies and implementation measures outlined in the eight elements of the city's general plan. Those eight elements include land use, urban design, economic development, transportation, open space and recreation, environmental resources and conservation, health and safety, public facilities and services, and last but not least, housing. Staff has reviewed the proposed sale of the subject property and has determined that the property's sale conforms to the city's adopted general plan, and so I'm going to go over a few of those general plan policies, and they're also outlined in greater detail in the staff report. So from the open space element, we have OSR4, which is to undertake a program to add 20 acres of parkland to the city system over the next 20 years. Seize opportunities to develop and/or maintain parks and recreation facilities within existing residential neighborhoods through acquisition or preservation of former school facilities. Also from the open space element, OSR8, during reuse of the former Crestmore High School site, preserve the existing playing fields for recreational use per direction of the general plan update committee. Moving on, from the housing element, within the housing element, the site was identified as a potential housing opportunity site. Some of the things to keep in mind in the redevelopment of this site for housing, as specified in the general plan, redevelopment must be in line with the existing neighborhood character. The former school site required no zoning changes prior to redevelopment with residential uses. The realistic development capacity of the site is six units to the acre because it is designated low-density residential under the general plan, and zoning, which permits a maximum of actually eight units per acre, which is what I said earlier. Align the redevelopment of the Crestmore site with the general plan policy to conserve open space on the site for community use. Then I'm going to go through a number of other policies also contained within the housing element of the city's general plan. Reuse former school sites to accommodate affordable housing. Next one, work with the school district regarding the reuse of the Crestmore site to encourage the development of a variety of housing types to address the needs of all incomes. Density shall be compatible with the surrounding uses, consistent with available service capacities and environmental constraints, and in accordance with existing city ordinances. Next bullet, allow the redevelopment of the Crestmore site to utilize clustering of new housing units to facilitate preservation of open space and playgrounds according to the general plan policy, which I cited earlier. So those are just a few of the general plan policies, and again, the complete list is in the staff report. Regarding public comment, we did mail, staff did mail notices out to residents within a property owner, excuse me, within a 300-foot radius of the site, and have not received any public comment on this item. Your action today is exempt from CEQA because this is not considered a project. It is before you. You're just making a determination of general plan conformity. Again, this is a request for determination of general plan conformity for the sale or lease of the properties only. This is not an action related to the actual sale of the properties. Any proposed project for the site would need to come, go through the normal review processes. Attached to the staff report is a resolution for the commission's consideration, basically going over the general plan conformity, which staff has outlined here today. Though no particular use or is guaranteed or anticipated, the sale or lease of this site would provide opportunities for housing development in San Bruno to meet its regional housing needs, be developed as open space for San Bruno residents, and/or be developed for recreation, education, or other community needs. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution, number 2019-03, attached to the staff report as exhibit A, finding that the sale or lease of 300 Piedmont Avenue owned by the San Mateo Union High School District is in conformance with the San Bruno general plan. And in closing, present with us tonight, to answer any specific questions related to the disposition of the site, is the superintendent of the San Mateo Union High School District, Kevin Skelly, PhD. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Do any commissioners have any questions or comments before we go into public comment?
No.
Commissioners, no questions yet? You want to hear a public comment first?
Public comment.
We'll go ahead and open for a public comment first. So are there any, is there anybody here for public comment? Go ahead. I'm not sure, Jerry, do you have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Okay. So if you have public comments, feel free to go into the podium, and we can just start taking public comments now for this item.
Hello. So if, if the property were sold for housing, I abut the hill that goes up to the high school. I'm on Madison, so I'm just concerned that any use of that space would be used for, I don't know actually who I'm asking this to, but would be used for also, like I don't know if that hill with all the trees and everything is considered part of that 40 acres or whatever, the land we're talking about. We're afraid to have like people looking into our yard, and it's very beautiful, and that's what we're concerned about.
So public comment is not an opportunity for discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Once you make your public comment, you can feel free to sit down, and then we can ask staff to report back at a later time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Kubri. I'm a resident on Rosewood Drive, and we object to the Planning Commission moving forward on this due to already impacted parking concerns, due to the change in the neighborhood, impacted traffic. Right now, people speed down that road, it's not even maintained, and obviously, we think that there needs to be additional egress, which would be exiting and entering the neighborhood outside of the three streets that would actually let you in at this point.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Lawler. I live at 111 Madison Avenue. I'd like to echo her comments. I know this has been under conversation for a couple of years, and it's kind of had, you know, fits and starts. We would like to see our neighborhood preserved, and I know we've heard that you can do that, I think, under this city plan or whatever term the gentleman was referring to, but when you talk about, it sounded like eight housing units per acre, I'm not sure exactly how you could maintain our neighborhood, which is single-family homes, and that's certainly a concern that we have. Another issue is the traffic impacts because we have younger families moving in, and the children already have small front yards to play in, so we need the fields, we need the community open spaces, and predominantly, we need safety. And we're getting more and more cars already coming through the neighborhood. We have a very steep street, and winding street on Madison, so it's already of concern for the kids, you know, who are out playing or just getting back and forth to school or trying to get to the little parks. And then the other street, I think that's Crestmore, is lined with cars. I mean, that's just practically a thoroughfare. And in addition, we're very close to the freeway, so you have a lot of people starting to cut through, and they're using, you know, Waze or Google Maps and everything to get around the traffic. And then you got the main I-10, the 283, sort of mini thoroughfare that runs right through our city park, which is where kids are supposed to play and we're supposed to enjoy ourselves. So we have some real concerns about this in terms of safety, you know, even just putting aside the aesthetics. I mean, there's some real, real concerns about it. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Noel Adaboni. I live on Madison, right up the street from, from you. And the, the beauty, I've lived in San Bruno for 60 years, and the beauty of Crestmore has always been that there's nobody behind you. Most of the homes, our backyards, you know, have been private. Like, I grew up in a house that was the first-time homeowner, you know, Buckeye Park, there were mountain lions and everything else. So putting homes back there, from my point of view, number one, is it gonna, I just have questions, is it going to block our views of the bay because we all have nice views? Are we going to lose our privacy? And one thing that really concerns me is where we're located, near the top of the hill, there's, I don't even know how big of an area that would be, but it's supported by trees that have been there a long, long time, and I really worry about moving the earth around and then having something happen where the houses would start to slide. Because if you go back there and dig in the dirt when my kids were little, it's filled with seashells and sand. That's what that, it must have been covered by water at one point. So you could go back there and literally just get a spoon and start digging in it's seashells and sand. So my concern would be if they do go ahead and build, that they keep that wall, that field, that earth maintained or held back so nothing happens to the homes that are on that hill. And the other thing that I was concerned about is if you're building all this housing and using the school sites as the areas that you're building in, where are the kids going to go to school? So now, are we going to have a shortage of schools? Like, you're taking the schools and putting housing for people to live and have children, and where are they going to go to school? Something to think about. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I live at 171 Glenbrook Lane, San Bruno. So I'm right underneath the track, and I just want to make you guys aware, if you don't know about it, but there's some natural springs between 170, 171 Glenbrook Lane, 180 and 181. So on that hill, I live at 171, and behind my house going up to the track, we've already had like two slides. So I'm concerned about weight if you put residential housing up there. Can the hill hold it? I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But I think, I just want to make you guys aware of it, to look into it. So, and I'm echoing everything else, everything everyone else said here. So, I mean, I would like to see some type of residential put up there, but not too much. I'd like to see the tracks stay, because I do run up there. I'd like to see the soccer fields stay for all the kids at AYSO. So it's a beautiful place, and I'm pretty concerned about the traffic. And one other thing I'm concerned about, if you guys develop the site and you bring in a lot of housing, does that mean we're going to have a lot of new high-tech jobs in San Bruno that are going to even create more traffic? Because San Bruno's been a great little city, I'll say that. Noel's been here 60 years, I've been here 59, so you got me by one. So I love this town, I raised two kids in it, both went to school, cappuccino because it, Crestmore closed. I am a graduate of Crestmore High School. So to see it go is going to be sad, but if I can say one thing, if we can not develop it and make it into a park, and San Bruno can buy the land, I'd be really happy. That's all I want to say. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evgenia Schneider-Schup. I also live on Madison, and I'm here representing several, actually, of my neighbors as well, with the concern that someone else raised earlier of that crest that goes down from Peninsula High School, filled with trees. Not only, again, is it absolutely beautiful, but from an environmental impact, what does it mean to remove that many very old and gorgeous trees? What does it mean to the animals that are living there? It is pretty amazing to abut against this area and be able to walk out of our yards, and it's just spectacular. It would absolutely, I think, be crushing to the neighborhood to lose that space, even if per se, no one lives on it, but, you know, animals, whatever it may be, trees. I personally do not mind if the space that the school takes up itself gets redone into housing, as long as we keep the fields, you know, the trees, the crest, but if the area of the school itself is redone into housing, I do not mind that whatsoever, but I do want to keep any open space as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Hi, so I'm not a resident of Crestmore, but I am a resident of San Bruno. I think the bigger thing for me personally is that I'm a teacher. I did grow up here as well. I don't have as many years as you folks, but one of the concerns that a lot of people in my generation have, and certainly a lot of the teachers in San Bruno have, is not being able to afford to live in the town that they love with the kids that they love because it's so expensive. And I know that part of the plan here is in doing and developing the housing is to provide an opportunity for housing for teachers, and I just would like to say that, you know, there are many, many teachers. I don't work in San Bruno anymore because I can't afford to live here and work here. And knowing also, I now work at a university, and the, even what San Mateo Union pays, which is more than what San Bruno is allowed to pay, or can pay, or does pay, even working at those entry-level salaries, teachers frequently cannot afford to live here anymore because things are so expensive. And so I'm really happy for all of you that live in Crestmore. It is lovely and beautiful. A lot of my very best friends grew up there. I'm very familiar, I played soccer on those fields too, up there, when I was a kid. But I think it would be nice to consider something kind of in the middle, like what you proposed of, you know, leaving some of the open space, leaving the fields, but still being able to also have some housing because they're, you know, not just low income, I mean, around here now, low income is like $70,000 a year. So teachers, that's right in the wheelhouse of what teachers make, and lots of other folks as well. And so if we want to continue to have not only teachers, but people that work regular jobs in our neighborhood and continue to live here and be able to access all the amazing things, I mean, really, I don't want to ever leave here, so I get it, but we want to make sure that other people can partake in all of that as well.
Thank you. And just a quick comment, low income in San Bruno is actually $60,000 to $105,000 a year, and in San Mateo County for a family of four, it's $117,500. Any other public comments on this item? Bring it back to the commission. Any questions?
Through the chair. Not exactly a question, but I want to confirm my understanding from reading the staff report that the requirements of the general plan and the housing element, as outlined in this report, suggest that, or indicate that that's precisely the plan for reuse of school sites in general, and this one in particular, to encourage clustering of housing and preserving open spaces, existing sports facilities and, and playgrounds, I believe. So just to confirm, it sounds like this is in line with some of the wishes that I've just heard.
Well, I think it's important to emphasize the general plan policies exist, but we don't have a project before us at this time.
Right.
So I just would emphasize that your action tonight is only to make a determination that general plan conformity related to the disposition, and so your, we've provided the general plan policies for your education and the community's education, and any future project which has not been submitted at this time, and have, we haven't even, we do not even have any conceptual ideas. It's the very first step that the district is taking, that those would be subject to the general plan policies and all the other applicable policies that apply to any development project, and would go through a future separate review process, also subject to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, which reviews environmental aspects that some of the public comments are related to.
So to clarify what our role is here, really, the only thing we can say is there's, there's nothing that goes against the guidance, the requirements of the general plan and the housing element and other planning documents that we have. There's no, there's nothing that would raise a flag. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, I would point out the substance of the resolution, as amended before you tonight.
Yes, amended.
Which makes the determination that the proposed disposition is in conformance with the general plan.
Right, but saying it's in conformance, given that there is no project at this point, that just means there's, there's nothing about it that, that is...
Well, you could have a situation where, and this is not the situation tonight, where you have information about the disposition that is in conflict with the general plan.
Okay.
So what the government code states is that there can be this determination made that based on the information that you have before you tonight and the information on the record that's been submitted to date, it is in conformance.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution because based on the information that we are aware of, it is in conformance.
Okay. Thank you.
I can see that there's another question?
Well, sort of. I just, I, again, I think this is more of a clarification question for everybody, is what initiated, what exactly initiated this coming before us tonight?
Sure.
So what initiated it was the school district officially, sorry, be, even if I try to speak up, it's controlled by the volume on the speakers, so I'll try to speak a little louder, but it's more important that this, our tech is trying to adjust the speakers a little bit. So what precipitated this, and this may be helpful if you maybe reopen the public comment hearing, allow the superintendent to speak forward, and maybe give you the full background here for your education, but the school district gave the city an official notice that they will be making this, or making this land available for disposition. It's important to emphasize that, just the very first step in a very long process. But the city received the official correspondence dated March 29th, that the Board of Trustees of the San Mateo Union High School District is soliciting offers to purchase or lease this surplus real estate. And again, that's the action that the district took, and they notified the city, and the city, under the government code, has the right to have this hearing and ask for this determination. Should this determination not be made, then it's assumed that the disposition is in conformance, and the city has 40 days to make that official determination. So I want to emphasize there is a deadline to make this determination, we cannot continue this tonight, and if we don't take this action, it's automatically deemed to be in conformance. But we did get that official notification from the district, and that was their action. So our action is in response to that.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful to know.
The only thing I have to say is that this will go before the city, and there are architects and engineers that'll be taking everybody's, when a project does arise, everybody's opinion will be taken into consideration, and it'll go through the full planning process, which will be pretty stringent.
Okay, so I do have a couple of questions, and kind of debating on where to start. I want to refer to the general plan, section 5.8. The city maintains a parkland dedication in Luffy, standard of 4.5 acres per 1,000 residents. This is quite a bit of development that's being proposed. Can you, can you please educate us on the recent change that the city council voted on, on the open space requirement?
Yes, so the city council recently adopted the development impact fee ordinance. That's a comprehensive impact fee requirement for all new development in the city, and if a project adds housing units, then they are required to pay that impact fee, and that... And that fee is designated, the park portion of that, to be used for park-related and recreation-related purposes. So that fee is assessed on all new residential construction formally. That general plan policy refers to our former ordinance, which was rescinded by a vote of the council in February. And that ordinance was flawed on, based on the city's view, because it only applied to ownership units. Currently, the city has a preponderance of rental projects going through the pipeline, as evidenced by the Plaza project, which was just completed with 83 new rental units, and the Mills Park Plaza project, which has 425 apartment units. And the ordinance and the general plan policy, which is based on state law, the Quimby Act, can only apply to subdivisions. And so the city was sort of losing out on a significant source of potential funding for improving and purchasing park land. So that change was made. And the fee, again, is just sort of just a replacement of the type of fee. So the city is, it will be, starting with the first projects to come online, under that ordinance, be collecting money that we can then use for parkland purposes.
So that the action by the city council essentially removed the requirement of any acreage for open space if the developer pays their fee?
Yeah. But it's important to note that traditionally, cities never obtained acreage. There was the ability to pay the fee. And so traditionally, like, for example, the most recent city subdivision, I think it was the Summer Hill Project up near Lenardi's, for example, they paid the fee. So there was the option, and traditionally, the fee payment was what the city received.
Okay. And so did I hear eight, potentially eight houses per acre?
Yeah. It's important to mention that eight units per acre is low-density housing. It's consistent with, there's the single-family development pattern of the city. It's also really important to emphasize that that's set by ordinance, adopted by the voters in 1977. So that is a ballot measure in place that preserves that density. Any change to that density would require a vote of the public.
Okay. So at 40 acres, that's about 340 units maximum?
Well, yeah. It's important to emphasize that based on the city's calculation in the housing element, which I think is provided in the staff report, no project would ever achieve that many units just by virtue of sort of the topography and then putting in, for example, roadways, et cetera. So the city did a rough calculation, I think it was 75% of the total acreage. But with a project site like this, there are, there are existing conditions that affect the maximum density that could actually be constructed. And no analysis of that has been completed in detail.
So I want, I want to make sure that we're emphasizing the open space requirement in the general plan, because where, I guess, where are the teeth with the new change that the city council approved to ensure that we have open space and that we maintain open space as opposed to having a developer just pay to maybe improve a park that's already existing?
Well, you're bringing up two different things, open space and parkland. They're not exactly the same thing. Parkland, the city's parkland ordinance, we're allowed for dedication of new public parkland. It's not equivalent to open space, which might be just greenery or, or part of someone's property, for example, private property. But the city, again, traditionally, did not get dedicated parkland. So the fee was traditionally what has been paid. On a site like this, I would emphasize there are other policies in the general plan, as noted tonight in the staff report and in your packet, that call for preservation of these playfields. And so it's a different, if it's a different policy being considered under those policies in the general plan, which is preservation of playfields.
So then are you saying that the soccer fields will be, continue to be located on-site?
I'm not saying that. The, there is a policy in the general plan that we would point to. But I want to emphasize that we have no proposal before us, and so this is circumstantial at best. But if a project is submitted, it will be reviewed relative to our general plan.
Okay. So that's where I have some concern, is that we don't really know what, what's being requested within the general plan.
But again, that's not the action before you tonight. Tonight, it's just a conformance determination that, under government code, section 65402 is required to be made if a local agency, and this applies to any local agency, not just school districts, but if the city were, for example, to dispose of real property, they would be subject to the same determination for general plan conformance.
Right. So I have the code in front of me, and I actually, we haven't received what was submitted to the city. So we actually don't know exactly what has been submitted that we are voting on is in accordance and in adherence with the general plan. We have a staff report, but we don't have a copy of what was submitted.
Nothing was submitted at all. Nothing officially was submitted to the city.
So what triggered the 40 days?
We, the government code. So we, we were provided with a notice of availability of surplus property for sale or lease, and we were provided with a, yeah, the same thing, the notice of availability of surplus property. We were not provided with any official request to make this determination on the advice of legal counsel, our city attorney. We are making this, putting this determination before you. And should no determination be made, I want to emphasize that it is presumed to be in conformance. So it's, it's possible, you know, other cities wouldn't, for example, follow this requirement, but we are following the government code as it exists.
So the way the resolution is written actually says that, it's on page two of the resolution, and it starts at page one, but it reads to say that the Planning Commission finds that the proposed disposition of the surplus school site located at 300 Piedmont Avenue is consistent with the general plan goals and guiding principles and policies and implementing policies, because it allows the site to be developed with housing that would help San Bruno meet its regional housing share, be developed as open space for the residents of San Bruno, and/or be developed for recreation, education, or other community needs. The "or" is what is concerning to me, because there are needs throughout the general plan that San Bruno needs to be met, and I am really uncomfortable with an "or" when we're talking about 40 acres of prime real estate in San Bruno.
Well, I would emphasize there's no proposal before you tonight. We are looking at what the general plan requires right now. And the disposition of this property, which is what's been initially proposed by the district, based on staff determination, based on the information that we have, is that it is in conformance with the general plan. I think we, the "or" statement allows for, you know, future options to be considered at that time.
Okay. What about the track? Will the track field stay or the track that a gentleman mentioned earlier?
Again, we, I cannot comment on whether the track fields would stay. We do not have a project before us tonight.
Well, so if we approve the sale of the property and then San Mateo County opens the bid up, right, for individual...
Again, we're not approving the sale of the property. You said if we approve the sale of the property, we're not approving the sale. That's the school district's process.
So the very first sentence, actually, the last sentence of the first paragraph of the packet says, "This is a request for determination of general plan conformity for the sale or lease of the properties only."
But you said if we approve the sale and we are not approving the sale.
General plan conformity for the sale or lease of the properties.
But I would just restate, we are making a general plan conformance determination related to the sale by the district, but we are not approving the sale.
Okay. So I guess...
We have no governance over that specific item.
Okay. Does it, before I go on, do any commissioners have questions? I have more.
Well, I'm going to attempt to rephrase in layman's terms and see if I'm closer to an understanding. What we're asked to do, if I get this right, is to determine that the concept of selling, the disposal of the property itself, with all the information we have, which is really at this stage because it's not underway, that, that, that idea of selling is in conformance with the general plan. It doesn't raise any flags. And the, the school district would have then permission to find a buyer, and then when they sell, that would be an action that would be subject to the city's jurisdiction.
No. The sale by the district would not be subject to the city's jurisdiction. What the city would have jurisdiction over is if purchased by a private entity that's subject to the city's zoning laws. For example, public schools are not subject to the city's zoning laws, provided they, the board makes the findings required in the, in state law. But if it was sold to, for example, to a private property owner and they pursued a development project, then it would be subject to the city's land use jurisdiction and jurisdiction under the California Environmental Quality Act, for example.
Okay.
But the actual sale, the city does not have jurisdiction over, other than this general plan conformance determination.
So then action is only triggered when at some point some owner of the site proposes to do something with the site? And then if it's, if it's the same use, if it's a school, then that's, that's not an action for the city to evaluate? But otherwise, most uses of the site at that point would probably be actions that trigger review?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So it's sort of a two-part process. Based on the information that we have right now before us, staff again is recommending this general plan conformance determination. Again, I mentioned circumstantially, you could have a, a public agency disposing of land if they've stated a purpose already through their, maybe the disposition statement that is inconsistent with the general plan. For example, if they said, hey, we're going to do, you know, the teacher housing. And again, I want to emphasize, under the current local ballot measure ordinance, 1284, teacher housing at a higher density, for example, apartments, would not be consistent with the city's general plan and associated ordinance, based on how it exists today. So based on the information that we have, which is that they're making this land available, it is consistent. But I want to emphasize, I think this law is in place, that if there was an agency trying to sell or dispose of land that was, that we knew at that point in time was inconsistent with the general plan, that we were allowed to speak up and say, hey, it's inconsistent. And that could very well happen in some limited circumstances. That is not happening here. Based on the information that staff has and all of our conversations and correspondence with the district, which, again, at very high level, based on them not having a proposal, not knowing who they're going to sell it to, but just us educating them on what the general plan requires, I think we're, we're making this recommendation tonight.
Can the person who's from the San Mateo County, San Mateo County step up, please?
You mean San Mateo United?
San Mateo United, yeah. Union High School. Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Kevin Skelly, the superintendent, will speak.
Yes, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you walk us through the process? What would be next? What would be next for you to actually dispose of the property?
So thank you all for coming in, for having us. We, first of all, I want to make it clear that the board has not made a decision to sell the property yet. All they have done is declare the site surplus, which means that now we, the staff can work on that topic. They could have decided, no, we're not going to declare this, this site surplus, but they did. So our next step, there's a whole slew of steps in terms of going to the state, sending letters to local governments such as this, and, you know, sort of reviewing that process. After a certain amount of time, the board will then see if we would, would choose to do an RFP process, to bring in a potential developer to work with us and the city on making sure that whatever was proposed was done. The developer who would do that would be interested in that process in terms of what kind of units that they could put in, what sort of, coming back to you with a much more specific expectations around, you know, parkland, trees, density, all those, all those kinds of things. When our board made the decision to, to declare the property surplus, which wasn't to sell it, but just to declare it surplus, they made a commitment to work with the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Park School District around soccer fields. So that's, that's a process that we will work with, and, and the soccer community has been clear in our, in conversations with them, that they're interested in having a central place in the community for soccer fields. And so that's something that we realize for, since the school was closed 39 years ago, the, the San Bruno community has had the advantage of using those fields at no cost from the district and run by the, the city of San Bruno and the volunteers at the soccer field. So there are many steps to go. I think one of the key pieces that's a catalyst for this is the fact that the district is in the process of looking for a new home for, for Peninsula High School, a location that would be much more central to the district. Many of our students spend an hour on the bus coming from, say, Foster City or South San Mateo to go to Peninsula. And while this is, this, the site has plenty of capacity for them, it's a long bus ride for some of our most vulnerable students. And so we want to put them in a location that would enable them to have work opportunities, to be closer to home, to have many transit opportunities for going to school, say, if they want to go to school later in the day or at night or at other times, that location would be more central. And so with the departure of the school, the students, this, this land truly is surplus. And so the board has a fiduciary responsibility to look at this resource, to figure out what is the best use for the school district so we can provide the best education for our students in this process. I know that we will be, you know, whatever happens in this process, if the board does decide that it's, that it wants to sell this property, the developer will be back to, with specifics around that and be very interested in hearing from the, from the community and the folks that spoke tonight.
And when the, when the RFP goes out, will the RFP have the requirements that are in the general plan?
Yes. Yeah. We, to the point that was made earlier, that we understand that this property has a certain zoning. We have an interest in building staff housing for the reasons that one of the speakers had tonight in terms of the, the cost of housing, the difficulty of finding high-quality teachers and staff to work in our schools. And so we believe that, that building staff housing is the best, the best use of our resources in this particular case. So, so, yeah.
And then you mentioned the soccer fields, but the rhetoric that you used made me believe that the soccer fields will more than likely not remain on the, on that site.
So I, I don't know that, there's been no decision on that topic. I, so I think we're working, the, the city of San Bruno is involved in those conversations. The San Bruno Park School District is, is involved in that conversation. And it may be that through that process, there's a better location for the soccer fields. Our commitment, and the board included this in their resolution declaring the property surplus, is that we would work with all parties to provide soccer fields and community use fields for the community.
And so my concern is that there might, when you say there might be a better location, there aren't that many locations left in San Bruno.
Yeah. So, yeah. So we understand we have an obligation to, to create or to build quality fields as part of this project, or the developer will.
I actually, I still have more questions, but I don't know if any of the other commissioners have any? No?
No.
Okay. So I want to just kind of go back to the timeframe that we're looking at. So in looking at the code, I think what concerns me is that we don't have, it says here, "The planning agency shall render its report as to conformity with said adopted general plan or part thereof within 40 days after the matter was submitted to it." We don't have a matter. We apparently don't have anything in writing. "Or such longer period as of time as may be designated by the legislative body." We have a full planning commission meeting. That's not a special meeting in two weeks, and I'm trying to figure out what the rush is to approve this tonight.
So I'm not sure what else we could provide to you at this point.
Well, it seems like we should... Well, it seems like we should probably receive a matter, right? Something in writing that states what you're actually requesting of us.
So this is Tom Shannon, he's helping the district on this issue.
So maybe just to clarify, excuse me, the school district isn't really requesting anything. This is in the government code, and the government code sets out all these notices as soon as the board passes a resolution to dispose. And what the government code is essentially saying is, we send a notice to the planning commission that this has been declared surplus. You have a choice. You don't have to hold this hearing, but San Bruno chooses to. All we're saying is, the government code says, is this site in conformance with your general plan? As you know, the zoning in place is single R1, 2.1 to 8 units an acre. And if you look at the general plan, it's overlaid as low-density residential. So essentially, you're charged with, at least if, in this case, passing a resolution now, since you're having a hearing, that this land is in fact what you say it is.
But then you, I mean, so that you just got to the crux, is you said a notice was sent. We, we have not seen that notice.
Well, I think Ms. Smith probably has a copy of the notice right there.
Okay.
It's, it's, I mean...
So maybe we can take a break and pass it around?
Sure. But I also just wanted to clarify to everybody, nothing will happen on the property till an application is filed with the city. That's the trigger point. You have to get some application, and we're not at that stage just yet.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was a notice submitted, just for the record. Okay, and then I did want to just go back to the resolution for a minute, since I think we'll be ready to motion in a minute, but I am still uncomfortable with the "or" provision in the resolution, and I don't know if I have any fellow commissioners, but for 40 acres and with the needs that we have in San Bruno, it appears that we should be requiring all of those needs that we have of a developer coming to San Bruno.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Just a clarification on the end "or." As the land is zoned, would it be within the general, the, within the general plan to potentially, I'm not saying that this would happen, but theoretically, it could be developed either as housing or recreation, education, or other community needs? Because as my understanding is, that is also acceptable through the general plan. I, I don't, unless you have another idea, I don't see any reason to narrow the, the use of this land, particularly if our general plan, which, which has been in place and it's my understanding, it's the will of the, the city and the residents, that, that these uses may be included as possible use for this land, and I don't see any reason why we would consider limiting that, going, going against the general plan in this vote. So I'm, unless there's, there's some reason why we should limit the use of this land at this point, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with limiting it if the breadth of these uses are covered under the general plan.
So if I may, I think, well, I guess the first question is, do we have the discretion to limit?
I would say no, you don't have the discretion to limit it, based on the purpose of the resolution before you tonight, which is again, just to make a resolution that, or have a resolution that the proposed disposition is in conformance with San Bruno general plan. I think the discretion that you're looking for comes in the future. If a developer obtains either through a lease or the sale of this property, should the district offer that up, which they at this point are not, then that comes later in the future. And then you apply all of those general plan policies and do the analysis of, does the proposal before us conform to us? I think, I realize you're sort of putting the cart before the horse here, and you're being asked to make this determination, but I want to emphasize that I think there's a series of sort of checks and balances in the government code to ensure that a public agency doesn't go down a path with declaring a site a surplus for a use that perhaps at the, in existence at that time, is not consistent with the general plan. So again, right now, the site is being used for a public high school. There's other uses up there, such as a daycare, and based on what the general plan allows, for example, right now, those are in conformance. So, but again, you could have a, a property, and we have these in town, where the use is inconsistent with the general plan right now, and so then you might have a different finding. For example, I don't know if this was a industrial manufacturing facility up there, we would be making a different determination right now, because based on the current general plan, it's inconsistent. But the use up there right now, at this point in time, and the information that we know about a possible use, which could be, could be any of those uses listed in the resolution, are consistent. So the staff recommendation is to adopt this resolution as is, and we understand your interest, but those would be tabled for a future discretionary land use decision that could potentially come before you at some point in the future.
I think my concern in voting for this as it is now, is that when an RFP is sent out for a buyer, it's going to be based on what we approve. So if it's not required now, then how can you require it later?
I don't, I don't believe that to be true, your statement, that this goes into the RFP and then leads that future buyer to be subject to this. This is purely a determination related to the, the school district's action of declaring the surplus. And the discretion in the government code is very limited to, to the disposition as exists right now, not some future hypothetical project that we have zero information about right now. So that discretion does exist, but it does not exist at this point in time with the resolution before you tonight. Okay. Any questions? No? Any other questions?
No, through the chair, I just, you know, if, if the property is sold to a developer, it's in the developer's interest to come up with a plan that's, that will be approved by everybody here, by, by the city and the planning commission. So, you know, I think they have to take all our wishes into consideration, otherwise it won't pass. So, you know, it's going to be viewed very stringently, obviously, because there's so much concern about it.
You can't, we're, public comment is closed. Sorry, you can't, you can't. We can't, we can't get into discussion now, yeah. So, so what I'm going to say is, I can, I do not feel comfortable voting on this. If, if the, if the staff recommendation is to approve this, and that if we don't approve it, it just gets approved by non-vote, then I'm, I'd rather not vote than vote for something that is not clear. If somebody would like to motion, then please feel free to, but I will be abstaining from this. Actually, I will be voting no on this.
Chair, I, I would like to express my disagreement. I think that now I have a, a better idea, and I, I see this as giving the okay for the process to begin. And at this stage, there is nothing that, that would be against any of the, the regulations and the planning documents that are under our purview. So this, it's, almost feels like a marker, you know? Now you can start the, the next steps. And for this reason, I would like to propose that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-03 to, regarding the, finding the proposed disposition of 300 Piedmont Avenue, the former Cresmo High School, by the San Mateo Union High School District, to be in conformance with the San Bruno general plan.
Do you want to roll call? Please.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No? So the ayes have it, the motion is approved. Okay, next item on the agenda is the conduct of business San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan.
The next item before you is a study session for the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan. The agenda for this presentation would be a staff presentation. Followed by the consultant presentation, that is from WRT, followed by the questions from the planning commission, then the public comments, and then the planning commission feedback for the conceptual design. The objective of this study session today is to provide an update on the progress and the results of the community outreach process that has been going on since, from, from January, and receive initial input on the conceptual designs of the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan. The recommendation we're making today is to receive the presentation, the draft presentation, and provide input to, to the staff and the consultant team on the conceptual designs of the various aspects of the Streetscape Plan. Just giving a brief background on this project, on January 8th of this year, the city council adopted the resolution approving the preparation of the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan, which is to implement the general plan and the transit corridors plan for the city. The basic project workflow involves four major tasks. The first one is analysis and preliminary feasibility study and a report, and a chapter in itself is the outcome of this task. The task two is the sequer determination, and task three is the community outreach, which is ongoing during the entire course of this project. And the fourth is the final Streetscape Plan preparation. A brief overview on the community outreach process that has already been conducted and is proposed in the future. We have already conducted three community workshops slash meetings. First one was the workshop, which I think a few of, a few of the members here had attended. That was on March 12th. March 28th was the stakeholder meeting, which was a closed meeting of 10 stakeholders who participated at the meeting. Then was the March 30th drop-in community workshop, which was, which was like an open house, and it was next to the Citibank on the San Mateo Avenue. And the coming, public engagement activities are a stakeholder meeting that is coming up tomorrow, and the third community meeting that is on Wednesday of, of May 22nd. The outcome of all the community outreach and the analysis and the feasibility study that was done for this project till date sets a vision for the design of the Streetscape Plan, which is, which has come up, which we think and the community has voted on to be simple and elegant. The community has come up with interventions that they want activated passers, more public spaces, better street trees, our street furniture, enhanced pedestrian safety, and better, better wayfinding, which is, and all this into a unified street with a unique identity. So this is the basic outcome of the community outreach and the study that has been conducted for this project till date. So at this note, I would like to introduce our consultant team. We have John, John Gibbs, the principal, he's not here today. We have Jacob Tobias, the project manager, who would be presenting the second half of the presentation, and which is the major design and the conceptual design of the Streetscape Plan. And we have Ruchah, who's the landscape architect, and these are the, this is our consultant team for the project. At this, I would give, I would request Jacob to come up and continue with the presentation.
Is this, can you hear me? Is the microphone in the right place? Raise it up a little bit, that's better? Thank you. Great, well, I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you for, for inviting us and having us here after that long, what's the right word? Absorbing complicated discussion. I hope we can have a little bit of fun here. I want to honor your time and respect your time. It's 10 after 8:00, we're planned on, planning on ending at 9:00. So I am going to go a little bit quickly, and then hopefully the images will, a lot of them will speak for themselves, and we can really focus on getting your input. Just a little bit about WRT. We're a landscape architecture, urban design, planning, and architecture firm. So we have the broad perspective of city planning, regional planning, and we work all the way down to the detail level of implementation. One thing that we take great pride in is that each of our projects really seeks to express something unique about the location and the community that it's in. We do a lot of streets, a lot of Streetscape projects, and, you know, I find that there's not necessarily a lot of square footage to work with on a street, but what makes streets very interesting are two things. One is they are so important to the communities. I find more people come to community workshops about streets and have real interest in how the streets are designed and how they function, more than parks and plazas and other places, because these streets are the economic engines of a city. It's extremely important that they work, and they work from a transportation point of view, they work from a commerce point of view, they work as places of gathering. And then the other thing is just that they are a great opportunity to express a, a community's local and unique character. This diagram is our initial character analysis diagram. It shows land uses, kind of a simplified land use diagram, and then some of the architectural character. What we found is, this is just already a lovely street to be on. I know a lot of people in the community notice all the warts and, you know, eyesores. What we noticed when we came here is, one, is that it's actually very active and successful already as a commercial corridor. We work in a lot of communities where the name of the game is to try to get something to happen on the street. Here, you've got that already happening, and the name of the game is to celebrate and support what's already here. There's an incredible diversity of, of types of, of shops and restaurants, and it just serves everybody in the community, it seems. There's also incredible ethnic and cultural diversity represented here. The Bay Area is known for being diverse, and to me, this street is one of the most diverse commercial corridors I've ever been on. So that says a lot about, about your community. So we're really, we, we just fell in love with this street right away, and we love coming back. Very briefly, in terms of our schedule and our outreach process, as Rucha mentioned, we've had already two community workshops and a stakeholder workshop. I'm going to move a little fast, so I might forget something here, forgive me, but we are now obviously meeting with you for the first time. There will be another opportunity to meet with you, and at that point, if I'm not mistaken, you will be voting to approve the plan, but this is, there's no vote tonight, this is just a study session. And then we're going to go to the community again, actually, sorry, that would happen before the planning commission meeting, later this month. And then finally, city... And then finally, City Council presentation. So we're doing a lot of outreach. So far, it's been very successful. Many participants came to a site tour. We got a lot of great input. And then the next thing was a drop-in outdoor workshop. We had it in the plaza next to the Citibank. This is the results of what we call our dots exercise. And basically, what we were searching for, a couple of things. But one of the main things that we were searching for is what, how does the community see itself? And how can we express that character? Because this street is so eclectic in its architecture, and because San Bruno, I think historically, has been a place of change, honestly, it was hard to kind of nail that down, and we really needed the community's input to understand the vision. And so these images represent the images on the boards that got the most dots, the most likes, if you will. And the words here on this board come from all of our input, including a moment on our tour when we just stood and asked people to shout out words and phrases. The, what we took home from this was a couple of things. One is, as Rucha mentioned, that there's this idea that the design should be simple and elegant. There's already so much going on on the street that needs to be celebrated. To add more cacophony to that would be a mistake, and I think we heard that from the community. But also, there needs to be something unique and exciting and activating about the street. So as I go through this presentation, I think, well, I'll get to there in a minute. But there's, we need to balance those two. Just goals from the community input. Activation, I won't read all of this. Activation, greening, beautification, safety, wayfinding, and identity. One key thing here I just wanted to mention under activation is day and night. There was a real consensus that this wants to be a place where people come at night. And after this meeting, we're going to go see what it's like on a Tuesday night. I haven't been here yet, honestly, after dark. Everybody wants to know, are we going to see it after dark? This will be my first opportunity for that. But my sense is it kind of closes down at night. So that's a key, a key goal. A broad overview of what would be included in this project. We're kind of dividing these into what we would call the baseline furnishings and improvements. And that's where that real elegance and simplicity would get expressed. So the project would include seating, garbage cans, street trees, lighting, bike racks, upgrade of the paving in general, tree grates we included in there. So that's sort of the baseline, and we're trying to find, and all of these images are just examples. We're not, these aren't selected yet. This is sort of the general approach and direction we're taking. So in terms of your feedback, I don't like that light is helpful, and also, more broadly, are we going in the right direction? And then below that, we have a number of special places, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on those in a minute. To start, I think probably, in my opinion, and I think the community tended to agree, if we do nothing else but get really nice trees on this street, this project would be a success. That feels like one of the most important things. Right now, you have those pots, those big planters with struggling trees in them. Total consensus that those have to go. I think for the interest of time, I'll just mention one other thing, is the need to balance trees with the ability to use the sidewalk, not just to walk across it, rock along it, but also to have sidewalk seating that supports the businesses. So this analysis talks about how that would get fit in, and we do need to be careful about getting street trees into, you know, in the right locations with the right size planters and so on. A couple of more specific and larger greening opportunities are, one specific example we saw right away was the, in front of the Bank of America, there's a very big radius on that corner, and we could tighten that radius up and add a lot of planting. We're calling it a rain garden opportunity. There is currently a green infrastructure plan being done for the city, and we're in contact with that team, that consultant. All of these planting areas, as you see the presentation, can be opportunities for stormwater treatment. So really adding greening to the corner bulbouts. The image there is an existing bulbout that is big enough to do all of that. There, as we go through the design process, we may find that we want to add some space to the bulbout, some of the bulbouts, to add additional stormwater management areas. The middle image on the bottom is the idea of taking an existing bulbout that you have, which currently has one of the pots on it, and really open that up. Provide a lot more area for planting, and equally important, if not most important, is those would be the opportunities to really get some big, healthy trees. There's a lot of soil there, we really want to take advantage of that resource. On hardscape and furnishings, again, just the potential palette of simple and elegant site elements on the top. And then some of the potential opportunities for enhancement. So for example, we may opt to use the seating as an opportunity to do the creative thing. Or it may be the lighting, it may be the paving, it may be a combination of those things. What I mentioned earlier is the need to strike the balance, so that not everything is artistic and unique. It's a few selected elements. Now we'll go into sort of a list of what we're calling the special places. One category of these special places is the alleys, or we could call them passeos, that lead from the street to surface parking lots. So your downtown parking plan has analyzed this and determined that it's important to really provide wayfinding and access to these surface parking lots, that there is enough parking. It's just people need to know it's there and know how to get there. And so that's part of why we're proposing to really enhance these passeos. Ideas there include murals. You know, one thing that the community talked a lot about was public art, and that this, in addition to a place to come and eat or shop, can also become an arts district. That's something that seems very important. There's already public art on the street, and we could build on that. Additional signage, features that you can see from both the street side and the parking lot side. Parking signage that's clear and easy to find, potentially, and there's another slide about signage in general, but potentially some directory signage to let people know what shops are on that block, say, if they park in the parking lot. Special paving could extend out from the passeos and cross the sidewalk itself to mark that location. And special lighting features could really make that both safe and exciting and fun at night. We also found that there, on a windy day, these are really nice spots to get out of the wind. So seating might be a good addition to these passeos. Posey Park. We heard a lot about how Posey Park feels like a failure. The fountain doesn't work. The, what walls are there that might be revealed because the fountain isn't working are plain and uninteresting. This concept does two things, two main things. One is it brings the active space away from that fountain, away from sort of behind that big planter that's existing now, and towards the street. So really trying to pull that activity towards the street, so there's not sort of this sense that there's a place behind things that you don't necessarily want to go to. And then takes advantage of the space by really planting big trees. That's probably the big idea here as a potential, is that sort of the sense that this is a gateway could be marked by a green, you know, a big moment of green shade, and just visually some big trees. And then also some improvements to the wall behind the fountain. That could be a mural, it could just be painted a color. It could be a real, another opportunity for art. And then in the fountain itself, just adding planting seems to be the obvious solution. Centennial Plaza is also discussed a lot by the community. We understand that there's some technical reasons now why it's not an accessible space. None of those, to our knowledge, are insurmountable. And so the community really wants to activate Centennial Plaza, and here are some ideas. It could be a place for temporary food vendors. It could be a performance stage. A lot of people talked about the connection with a music store that's really nearby that used to have performances on the sidewalk. People talked about how there used to be a farmer's market on the street, and there was a desire to bring that back, and that could happen in this space. One really interesting idea that came from the community was how about a place for children to play? There's all of the, there's the swim school, and then there's also all of the sort of tot-related activities. There are shops for baby clothes and strollers and all that stuff. So it seems like a place for kids is really, could be really successful here. Kind of extending the idea of a special place to the bulbouts in general. These images are an exploration of how the bench, a seating element, could become that custom thing. What we're trying to express here came out of the stakeholder meeting mostly, but that as far as a theme, we might think about transportation, we might think about the airport. Sort of this sense of taking off and landing is a shape that we've been exploring, not only in the bench, but if you go back, even the mural here might have that sort of arching, curving form, the arch over the passeo that says Avenue. So we're starting to play with a theme of, you know, not something literal necessarily, but maybe something that just starts to express that sense of movement. There's also the train station, transportation seems to be a theme. I think this is the last slide, so I did go fast. But part of our scope is to explore wayfinding, not only on the street itself, on the avenue, but how, to make sure people know how to get here. So from all of the freeway exits and just general major circulation routes, there could be just some simple directional signage getting, leading to the avenue. And then just sort of a whole sign program. So there's directional signage, their sign is really about parking, as I mentioned, that's important. There's potentially the directory to the shops. And then finally, a couple of locations for a major gateway statement. This map of where these signs would be located is a work in progress. We welcome your input, or anybody's input about that. We are honing in on really marking the north and south end of the commercial corridor with a gateway. I could go into more detail about that, but as we come, we keep, we keep sort of exploring. Every time we come to the site and get out and drive onto the site, we think about where this should be. Where we're, where we feel this sort of gateway element might be best is at the southern end at Camino Real, and right sort of where Posey Park is. So south of the Caltrain Bridge. But north of the Caltrain Bridge might be some directional signage, so it's not, you know how to get there, but you've arrived really, once you get to sort of the Posey Park location. Ideas are something that really goes across the street, like an arch. These are very preliminary ideas, but we're trying to get at that simple and elegant kind of design. Nothing that looks Victorian, and nothing that looks overstated. So we're trying to strike that balance. And then we had another idea, which was, as we were looking at Posey Park in particular, maybe there are some additional ways to provide some shade. And again, preliminary ideas, but maybe there's a big tensile structure that gets lighted at night. That kind of, kind of got interesting to us. So that was the final slide. I hope that wasn't too fast. I hope the images speak for themselves, and we really want to listen more than talk.
Commissioners?
Yeah, it's fairly radical, but I was wondering, was it ever considered to make San Mateo Avenue one-way traffic?
Yes.
And the reason I'm saying that is that you couldn't, you know, it's the transit corridor, and we could introduce a cycle lane there, which would be very advantageous. And, you know, but keep, emphasize keeping as much parking as possible.
Right. Yeah, we actually did study that. As you mentioned, there's two potential benefits there. We did study putting diagonal parking and how that would fit. And two things happened. One is you can't, you can't do it on both sides of the street, so you'd have to, and you have to get, make it a one-way street. Even then, we're not totally sure that would fit. What, what we and staff think would be the best approach to that question would be to not, not do anything that would preclude it in the future. We actually talked about having an appendix in the final document that suggests that that could be studied in the future. It's sort of, it's outside of the scope of this project really to take that much farther than this. If you were to turn it to a one-way street, you'd trigger SEQA analysis and so on and so forth. So the plan is currently to keep the function the same as it is a two-way street with parallel parking on both sides. We did take a quick look with our transportation consultant. We have a transportation planning consultant on our team. And one of the things that would make going to a one-way street challenging is that you're not, this, this street is not located in a grid. So it'd be, it's difficult to find an alternate route, or to create a one-way couplet. So aside from the fact that it was sort of outside of the scope of this project to explore it further, it seemed like it would be challenging to really make it work. But that would again require all kinds, you know, the whole full nine yards of transportation analysis and so on.
Yeah, I just think it's an opportunity to put in a bike lane there, where, you know, the general plan calls for as many, the introduction of as many bike lanes as possible.
Yeah, I, let me, we can study that a little bit more. And I think the heart of the comment is to make biking more attractive on this street. And so even if we can't find a way to put a bike lane in, we certainly would explore other, other things. Obviously, bike parking and providing ample parking for bikes. Signage and sharrows on the street would be a minimum that we could look at. There were some comments about making sure that, that biking isn't impeded by double parking and the locations of bulbouts and other, other things that can make it difficult to bike. So we're studying all of those, those things. Just a little bit of a tangent in terms of double parking and loading. We observed on the street that actually the lanes, well, and it's related to biking too. The current travel lanes, I believe, are 14 feet wide. And that's considered a nice wide lane, at least, you know, generally, when you, when you don't have any other kind of bicycle facility. And we watched, while we were having the community workshop in the plaza, we literally stood there and watched a truck double parked. literally stood there and watched a truck double parked, unloading, it was kind of funny, they were unloading a whole bunch of meat. And the guy was carrying these like carcasses of animals in and out of the shop and we were just like, wow, this is, this is, this is life, this is urban, you know. But anyway, everything kind of worked. It's wide enough to where we actually observed the double parked truck and two cars passing each other. And so the recommendation there is to sanction that essentially by striping a dashed yellow line down the middle of the road rather than a double solid yellow. Obviously, if you're on a bike and all that's happening, you know, you need to wait. But people really seem to, when they get on this street, they're okay with slowing down. I, I personally found that people are very gracious about stopping when I'm trying to cross the street. People tend to drive fairly slowly. There, there is all of that loading activity, people were, were passing each other, nobody was honking. So, you know, as a bicyclist, I think that's one of the main things that would make a street like this safe. You already kind of have it. There's sort of a general cultural understanding and there are probably some design cues that are already working in your favor. There's already the mid-block bulbouts and all these other traffic calming features. So that was a bit of a tangent, I'm sorry to take so much time, but I think in terms of the traffic operations, there's not a lot of change that we would really recommend, actually. You have a lot of high-visibility crosswalks, you have the flashing beacons for pedestrians. So we're going to study all of that, but I think what you have now is actually a very nicely functioning street from all those, all those points of view.
Along the same lines, was there any thought to a pedestrian-only walkway if we're planning to have a parking garage at some point and if we could simultaneously be planning for the future? I know a number of European cities have taken these on where it's only open to pedestrians. Was that, I know I brought that up on the Saturday event, but I don't know if that was brought up by anybody or, and what your thoughts are on that?
No, it, I guess again, it's, it is, for better or worse, outside of the scope of this study because again, that would trigger a lot of traffic analysis and SEQA and things. In fact, just as a, as a related point, the downtown transit corridors plan suggests redesigning the intersection at Camino Pablo. And we're essentially taking that design and kind of putting it into this plan, but in order to limit the, the triggering of all that SEQA analysis, we're actually not even furthering that piece of the design. So, so we, we just don't have the scope to study that. I think more broadly, there are lots of cases where that's been done to the detriment of businesses. All of the sort of pieces have to be in place to really have the kind of foot traffic that's necessary. Certainly one thing would be a parking garage so that people don't just simply go elsewhere. But anyway, long story short, it's, it's sort of outside of the scope of this project. And I think it would be, again, I would just stress that what's there now is really working. We were just there and the sidewalks aren't too narrow, you know, you've got 10 feet on one side and 12 feet on the other side. We work in a lot of communities where there's four or five feet of sidewalk. So I, I don't, I don't think it's going to take such a radical change to, to improve the street.
Through the chair, sorry. One of the comments on the Centennial Park, I think it'd be nice to see that completely paved in and have seating and shade where, a nice quiet place where people can sit and read or maybe eat their lunch or read to their children or whatever. And maybe with a fountain and the, plenty of trees and seating.
Through the chair. First, I would like to thank WRT for the, and you for the work that's been done to date. I think it's a very nice process of consultation and getting information from the public and I like the ideas I've seen. I, I like the idea of tying this to transport, not only because of San Bruno's location obviously, but because it ties in with our transportation corridor and I am looking at, on the last page, at those top pictures with essentially a canopy and...
This one?
Yeah. And something like that could almost serve as a, a good, a good bus stop point if it's raining.
Mm-hmm.
So I like that. The, the curved benches, they're not quite working for me. It seems like they're using a lot of space and providing little seating for the area they're taking, but, you know, and maybe it's just a question of tweaking. And I am trying to remember, because when I'm on that street and it's windy, my eyes are mostly on the ground and I'm keeping my things in my hand, but I would just like to, to, to put a post-it for, on checking what, what effect the wind tunnel could do on a, on a, you know, this sort of gateway. It looks like it's a, it would be, this example would be metal. I would, I would check how, how it performs in our, in our little wind tunnel.
You mean from a structural point of view, just make sure it doesn't...
Yeah.
A, stay standing, but even that it, that it, I can imagine even just maintenance issues if it's really windy and it's not, not appropriately...
Because we get pretty good winds.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is really, really exciting. I know that some years ago, the big improvement that was in downtown involved those big pots and I think a lot of people are going, I don't think this is, you know, this better be different than the last time. And it's so different and so this is so exciting to see. I really feel like the, I agree with you on all of the magical things that are in our downtown. And when I look at the spread of what you've put together, the spirit and the texture of it feels right to me, especially with the new Caltrain station and that being, you know, the southern, or the, sorry, the northern entry point, kind of sets, sets a tone. And I think this, especially a lot of the furnishings and, and metal improvements, signage, feels really in keeping with that. And, and I, I do get the sense of movement, transportation, but also a sense of playfulness and kind of lightness, which I really, I really like. I think some downtowns kind of try to go a little too, I don't know, adopting some sort of style, whether it be Tuscan or, you know, something that's not really authentic to the, to the area. And this feels authentic to me. And so that feels really good. I'm excited about that. Some specifics, I'm really excited about the bulbouts and trees, trees, trees. When we were thinking about moving to San Bruno, I just drove through and I was like, God, this city needs trees. And so downtown, it feels just kind of, I mean, there's lovely stuff, but I think a lot of it will be activated and will come to life with trees and greenery. We'll see the beauty that's there because right now we see, I think, a lot of concrete. So yay for the trees. I'm just going to kind of peel through here and look. I like a lot of the elements that you've, you've chose for the furnishings, maybe not the, the marsh-themed trash can, but that's a small thing. I actually kind of like the light.
That's helpful.
I think the light's fun. I think the light is, is interesting and fun and it feels friendly with the Caltrain. I do love the archways and I love, I love the idea of activating the paseos and providing some seating in there. I don't know from public safety and transience and all how seating would work, but I think we'll work with that with the police and all that. It goes through them too. But just visibility, I guess visibility is really what I'm after in that area. I actually wrote notes on here, I was gonna say, oh, well, Sophie had mentioned the bench, the benches, the swooping benches. And while I, I love that from an artistic standpoint, I agree, don't get a lot of seating from that and I also worry about tripping because those little swoops that just kind of pop out of the ground, it's so romantic and beautiful, but like my kids will break their nose.
Or skateboard on it.
Yes, yeah, it looked like perfect for skateboarding. Which is exciting, but maybe not quite right. In the Posey Park, I love the idea of, again, the big trees and that place is, it's so flat and just there's this big sky and there's just, there's nothing textural, there's nothing alive there. And as soon as I learned that the fountains weren't going to work, I just had plant trees and that thing. And so it's exciting to, to, the idea of having something really vertical going on there. I don't know if that's space, I know that trying to integrate a farmer's market into downtown or having a place for farmer's market would be great. I don't know if Posey Plaza is the right place for that or the, the little park I can never remember the name of.
Centennial Park.
The Centennial Park that you can't use. I don't know which one would be better or more practical, but if you did put in the structure, the shading structure here, that maybe could be useful for farmer's markets, shading for farmer's markets, although with the wind, I don't know if that thing would take off and, and fly over to SFO. This is really exciting. Sorry, guys. I think that's the gist of what I had to say as far as feedback, but overall, I'm super duper excited. And, oh, I did have a question. I think this is probably more for staff, but maybe you can answer it as well. When you're westbound on San Bruno Avenue approaching the Caltrain Station, I noticed that there are two really big plinths or blocks that have big bolts sticking out of them. Just the angle that makes me say, was there meant to be an arch there and there's not an arch there? Yeah, what's up with that and are we considering that?
I can, I can take the first stab at it. There was an arch built and it was deemed infeasible to actually install it. Why exactly, I'm not sure, but there's, yeah, there's an obvious something missing. Again, in terms of, we can, we can think about ideas about how to, how to make use of those. But again, and I'm curious about your, your, your impressions of this, it feels to us that, you know, just the whole train tracks and that whole thing is already, A, pretty busy, there's a lot going on. And B, it itself is a gateway. You kind of don't need to put a gateway on a gateway. And again, as we were driving in this evening, it was sort of, to me, it just felt even, you know, as we've been thinking about this in our office and then coming back to the, to the site and testing the ideas we've been thinking about, it just feels like once you're already through that, that you kind of want to have an aha moment. Okay, now I'm on the avenue. And, and the avenue is what we kind of want to brand this thing, by the way. But, but so I don't know what those things ought to be, but I'm not sure they want to be what was originally intended. I'm not sure that's the right place for a big, a big thing anyway.
Yeah.
So that's sort of our feeling. But I'm, I, we're very welcome to other ideas about where that gateway wants to be or where any of the signage wants to be. This may not be the moment to get into detail and roll up our sleeves analyzing that. But anyway, any, any response to that direction, I think, would be helpful because that, that is really a, a pretty big decision that needs to come out of this plan is where is that aha moment?
Yeah. I, I agree with you as far as the arch, there are a lot of layers already going on and the Caltrain Station itself does create an arch, albeit kind of square-ish, but I think that, I mean, go with it, go with what you've got. I don't think you need to add anything more to that to, to make it any busier, but in that area, I think landscaping, big trees.
Big trees, where those, demolish those, demolish those foundations and actually put trees there instead. That might be wonderful. I don't, that'd be a very expensive planting project, but it's a, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, for the aha moment, I don't know. I think it depends on where most people are going to be coming from or where we expect to get a lot of traffic from. I agree that that's not the right entry point, but I think a lot of people feel as though they've arrived downtown from 101 when they're coming that direction. I don't know. I'll let you do the thinking.
Through the chair. In places where it might be difficult to, to plant trees, is there any consideration of a structure with climbing plants or hanging baskets of, are those some options?
That is an idea that we were thinking about specifically for those paseos and we can look at that a little bit more. I think the concern there would be planting the right thing that doesn't require a lot of maintenance and that works when it's shady. So we can certainly look at that. Along the street itself, I don't think there's a lot of places where I imagine it would be difficult to plant trees. One thing that we would recommend very seriously considering is subsurface improvements to the soil. And there are some technologies around that. They can serve a double purpose of treating stormwater and giving the trees more roots. And so we'll be definitely incorporating that into the plan. They're not cheap, but that investment is, I think, well worth, well worth it if you can find the funds to do it at all. Again, as I mentioned, I think, you know, we get really excited, I think, about the fancy furnishings and artistic elements and lighting, but if you can plant a tree in the long run, that investment, it's just a very good investment. And if you can give that tree really good soil, it's, it's, I would recommend putting money in, into that kind of thing, even though it's not visible and cutting other fancy, you know, shiny objects from, from a budget. So we'll, we'll certainly be recommending that. I should mention that there's no, you know, this, that our project stops at a schematic design level and then, you know, there would be, you know, figuring out the funding and the construction documents and everything would happen at some future date. So we can easily make all kinds of recommendations and at the end of the day, it's going to come down to how much funding there is. But, but again, I think, like to answer your question, I don't see a lot of places where you would need to do something other than just invest in a good soil and planting a good tree.
I have a couple of comments. I just wanted to first of all thank you guys. I attended the Saturday event, I thought it was really well planned out and organized and thank you to Michael and Ruscia who were present and welcoming everybody as they came in with instructions. I like to think of the downtown as like this downtown of American dreams. I mean, we're right next to the International Airport, we have a significant amount of diversity. And I agree with Commissioner Lethen that this really feels authentic. I think, I was thinking back to when I was a kid and for probably at least 25 years, downtown has looked the same. And so the last two years, we've really started to see somewhat of a change with the aperture building coming up and we're going to, I think, continue seeing more changes. So I actually wrote down one thing that you said, which is the Centennial Plaza, none of the excuses, to our knowledge, are insurmountable. So I'm really happy to hear that because I know I have heard on a number of occasions that we can't do anything with Centennial Plaza, that it's not usable. And so I'm really glad to hear that because as you're driving down Genovin, it's the first thing you see into our downtown. So I can't wait to see what is possible, whether that be a park or a building or whatever, but something that's usable to our residents would be really great.
Well, not to interrupt, but I hope I'm right about that.
Oh, okay.
That's just, I haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah.
So we'll look into that more carefully.
Okay, then I hope you're right too, because I would love to see it used. I agree with the trees, I would love to see as many trees as possible downtown. I think it makes a huge difference in the feel, the actual feel of walking in a downtown. I wanted to highlight one of the slides that you had, which had the lights, a feeling of, like I think right now we just have these lights kind of wrapped around the street lights. It would... It would be great to have a feeling of fluidity. So either, either lights flowing from one street light to another, flowing through the middle of downtown. I think you had some balls that had lights in the middle. I don't know, you know, really what's possible right now because we're going to probably have more construction downtown as well. So I think, keeping that in mind, I would love to see more fluidity with the lights because I just feel like they're guiding you through your downtown. As far as the Posey Park, it's right outside of Caltrain. We're going to have the new Huntington Building. Let's go on Huntington, they have the, probably some kind of cafe or retail downstairs. J.C. Bruno has just opened. I think the idea of having a Posey Park that actually is inviting, I think right now it's not very inviting. And so seeing the murals that are up there, how can we enhance those? They're actually quite beautiful. So could we have maybe street vendors lined up against where there should be a water, yeah, some kind of water fountain? Or could we have an art show on Fridays that goes from there to Centennial Plaza? And the paseos are also filled with artists. But I think cities that have done this already successfully is like Oakland has done their fir-, I think it's First Friday Arts. There is, San Francisco, I think they do Sunday Streets. So other cities have successfully done this, but how do we kind of wrap it all into this plan of what we'd like to see in downtown? The other area that I think wasn't mentioned that I think is a really great asset to the city is that little park right outside of Citibank where the benches are. I can see that being a gathering area as well that I think right now is underutilized. The other thing I wanted to mention is the idea of the paseos. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but they have this, there's this idea of Pathfinders. And so I believe San Jose Downtown Doors does this. But this idea, one of the things I love about downtown is it's very family oriented right now. I can take my kids down there. They have activities for adults, for kids, and hopefully we don't lose that. But it's this idea is as you're creating art, you also create a path through the art. So for example, imagine your family or you're on a date and you go to any merchant on San Mateo Avenue and they give you a passport book. And every art, every mural that you see in downtown, you're looking for something. So I'm going to propose just hypothetically, but San Bruno is a city with a heart. Every painting has a heart somewhere on it. And as you find it, you identify it on your passport book. And when you're done, one of the merchants might have a little dinosaur for your four year old, you know, or something that the city's, you know, merchants might invest into the city. But it's just a way to activate and engage with not just the merchants, but with your own downtown to feel comfortable. So something that I wanted to propose that I think could be a lot of fun for families and individuals. But overall, I'm really excited about this. It looks, it looks really great and I think it's just what we need to start revitalizing our downtown. So thank you.
Thank you. Great. I love those ideas.
Oh, yeah.
And the way of, you know, I think it's the combination of making places with physical improvements and then also all the programming that those improvements can support and just, it's both.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? We're not taking any action on this item, correct?
No, that's correct.
Oh, yes, public comment period.
So is there any public comment on this item?
David Natchal, 520 Skyline. I matched that lady that said 60 years in San Bruno. This is our 60th year too. I want to compliment the architect firm. I went on the walk, Morgan was in our group too, and Commissioner Morgan, excuse me. And we had, I really liked the way the architects were good listeners and wrote down everything. And then the pop-up was also terrific. I've gone through, as a park commissioner, I've gone through this twice with Florida Park and our $50 million new rec center. And all three of those were terrific as far as getting San Bruno citizens to put their input. I remember the avenue when we had high-end clothes shops for men and women. We had Ross's, a department store. We had a high-end photography shop. Then it went way down. And what I want, I hope you're really focused on, we have a lot of absentee owners that don't care if their shops look, I don't know if it's a write-off, tax write-off or something, but if that can be addressed, then that would really help. I'm sorry I didn't speak about the last topic. As a retired teacher and park commissioner, where we have 1,500 kids playing on those sport fields, no place to go if that goes. But many of us have been going to the San Mateo Union High School District Board meetings. They know that we're, we really want those fields and they're listening. So hopefully, they'll just sell the buildings. That's a work in progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? So with that said, any final comments before we move on to the next item?
Yeah, just to thank you for the presentations and I've been through all of them and they were excellent. And as gentleman said, you're good listeners.
Yes.
Thank you.
I echo that. Thank you. And it's, you got, you done early, five minutes to nine. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, items from staff, selecting the June 13th ARC Committee Member Meeting.
Yes, okay, so as of right now, we anticipate having the June 13th Architecture Review Committee meeting. I want to emphasize there's a chance, though I'm not positive, the Recreation and Aquatic Center is on that, is on that meeting. So if the commission would likely like to get more information as to whether that might be happening before selecting the members, we could defer this to the next meeting. Or you could, you could pick them now if you know your availability, but I just realized we only have four of you here tonight and we would need three of you to commit to the meeting. So if you're comfortable amongst the four, offering three, that would be great for June 13th, but I know that two of you are on the Advisory Committee for the Recreation and Aquatic Center, so there's a chance it goes before you that night. And I, I just wanted to put that forward.
Through the chair. I assume that it would probably be beneficial if Sophie and myself, as we are on the Advisory Committee, did not see it in architecture review. We would get more, more fresh eyes on the project. That would probably be a good idea. Maybe it'd be better to postpone until next week when we have more, more bodies? Two weeks, sorry, two weeks.
Okay, we will keep this on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I concur.
Okay. So just looking ahead to that meeting, I thought it might be helpful if I give you an indication if I do know that items are tentatively scheduled. So I wanted to draw attention to the next meeting, May 21st, and tell you that as of right now, that there's one tentatively scheduled item. That is the review of the 2019 to 2024 five-year capital improvement program and the fiscal year 2019 to 20 capital improvement program budget and its conformance with the San Bruno General Plan pursuant to the Government Code 65401. So it is a similar resolution to what you saw tonight, but we will have the, all the information about the projects. And just by matter of background, the budget is being finalized, so that isn't ready, but we're putting the finishing touches on the CIP because this conformance is required to be made. And I think it's a very educational piece to educate you on what the city is considering in that CIP budget. So that concludes that item.
Thank you. Any public comments on items not on the agenda? All members of the public have left, so nobody's getting up, so we'll move on. Items from members and subcommittee reports. So the first one is Chair Mason would like to discuss whether to agendize a Housing Element Annual Report Staff Summary Presentation and Overview of City Inclusionary Housing Requirements for a future meeting. So I attended the recent 21 Elements, I guess it was like a seminar for planning commissioners. And they really highlighted different ways that we should be looking at housing and the future of housing. And one of the suggestions made was the inclusionary housing requirement. So we already have an inclusionary housing requirement. I think it would be great to be educated on it as a commission. And also the Housing Element Annual Report that staff gave to the City Council was, I thought, very educational for where San Bruno stands currently on its housing requirement and that it would be great to also give that presentation here since we're reviewing and approving housing developments.
Madam Chair, there is already a plan for a full presentation to the Planning Commission on the schedule, on the long-term schedule of the Aquatic Center, Recreational and Aquatic Center Committee. So I think that will be addressed. We don't, we don't have to request it.
Oh, that, you mean the Housing Element?
No, for the City Recreation and Aquatic Center.
Oh, for the second one?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So for the first one, that's still a request?
I totally agree with you with the first one. I would love that.
Okay.
I'd love it too. Sounds like a great opportunity.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you for confirming that you want to put that on the agenda. So we will place it on the next agenda if possible. We're a little sensitive to if the, if it was already full with public hearing items, we would sort of just try to budget what's scheduled with a public hearing. But I do anticipate at this point, given that at the next meeting, we just have the CIP, that we could give you that presentation.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we would also distribute everything that we provided with to the City Council, which is a full report, and then a series of tables that kind of form the, what's called the annual report. It's just some tables that we fill out and we've already submitted to the state, but we can update you on those tables.
Okay, thank you. And to Commissioner Legasse's point, if we are having the Recreation and Aquatic Center already coming to us, we don't need that. That, you don't have to do that presentation.
Yeah, so that, when, if I can just respond to the request, so we do anticipate that that will come before you for a public hearing and a vote because you are the approval body for that project as well as what is called the conditional use permit for the park and recreation facility. So we anticipate that happening this summer. Right now, we're working on the sequel document and we can't agendize it before that. But I think what we heard tonight at the meeting was that we are trying to get that before you as fast as possible. So I would say that my recommendation would be to wait and have that full presentation when you take action. And again, we're looking at possibly July or August ideally.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I think when, when I made this, I didn't realize that there was a separate committee because I was, I don't believe I was at the meeting when they were selected. So that's good to know. Thank you. With that said, this is a special meeting, so there's no other items on the agenda. We are going to adjourn and it's 9:05 PM. Our next regular meeting is on May 21st at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center. Thank you. Bye.